Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube. The meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me, Almighty God? We thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the recent rain that you provided. And God, we just thank you for the freedom to assemble here today. I pray for your wisdom and guidance for this council and the important decision and business they'll be handling today. I pray for the mayor and his staff. You'll continue to keep your hand on them and help us as we move forward as a city to keep our eyes and our focus on you, and we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting that was held June 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of June 17th through the 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of June 17th through the 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 606 Polk Street in District 2. This is Billy and Gail Wise, subject to the mortgage, in favor of Exchange Bank of Alabama, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there one speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in May of 2021. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 2316 Cansler Avenue in District 6. And this is William DeAngelo Ross, DeAngelo William Ross, John and wife Shannon Sims being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in May of 2021. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in May of 2021. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is William DeAngelo Ross, DeAngelo William Ross, John and wife Shannon Sims being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution abating of nuisance on property located at 1205 Dwight Avenue in District 7. This is James and Carolyn Watkins being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 824 Hilliard Street in District 3. And this is Elizabeth Rutledge, Sammy Rutledge, Lula Rutledge, and Elizabeth Winburne being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have new business none. We have department reports. Our city clerk has an announcement to make.
Yes, I have just a few announcements about our upcoming city election. Today at 5:00 PM is the deadline for any candidates who wish to run for office to qualify. So we're qualifying for the offices of mayor, seven city council member seats, and seven school board seats. And secondly, I would like to encourage all the voters to make sure that your voting record is up to date. The City of Gadsden elects its officials by district, and so we want to make sure that everyone is assigned to the correct district and the voting box according to where you live. And so there are several ways that you can do that. If you're not sure if your voting record is correct, you can call the city clerk's office, or you can contact the Board of Registars also. Then last of all, I want to announce our city polling places, because some have changed from the last time we had a city election, and also some of these are different from county, state, and federal elections, which have occurred in May and June. So I'll just run through the list really quickly here. For District 1, our polling places are the Antioch Family Life Center and the East Gadsden Community Center. For District 2, East Gadsden Community Center and Thompson Community Center. District 3, the former Gadsden High School Lunchroom, Carver Community Center, and Thompson Community Center. District 4, the Venue, Meadowbrook Family Life Center, and the Downtown Civic Center. District 5, Downtown Civic Center and the Tabernacle. We'll be voting in the gym at the Tabernacle. District 6, Dwight Baptist Church and Walnut Park Community Center. District 7, Dwight Baptist Church and Kiwanis Pavilion. And you'll notice that I named some locations twice. We set up a totally different voting box at several of our locations because they handle more than one district.
Captain Jackson.
Madam President, Tolls?
Morning.
Good morning. Councilwoman Williams has asked us to speak a little bit about elderly abuse today, so I brought one of the best and brightest from the Detective Division, Sergeant Eric Phillips. He knows more about this than I'll ever know. So if you guys have any questions about elderly abuse crimes or anything like that, please feel free to ask him, and he will definitely answer them for you.
Okay. All right. So you're gonna tell me how I keep my money from my grandkids?
I don't know about that. That'll be a different charge.
Okay.
All right, so first of all, I just want to read what elder abuse is. A person commits the crime of elder abuse and neglect in the first degree if he or she intentionally abuses or neglects any elderly person, and the abuse or neglect causes serious physical injury to the person. So basically, the difference between a first degree and second degree has to do with the injury. First would be serious physical injury versus physical injury. Generally, how these cases get reported, somebody will either call the police department, or they will call DHR. So we will, if they call the police department, we'll go first, and if we see signs of some type of abuse or neglect, we automatically get DHR involved. DHR has the resources available for the medical side of things to deal with the abuse or neglect that's going on. So they always get involved with us when it comes to checking on the elderly. I spoke with someone at DHR just to kind of get some, we don't deal with this a whole lot, so they would deal with it more, and what we see most of would be self-neglect. So if we get a call from a neighbor, most of the time it would be a neighbor. Hey, I think my neighbor is being neglected or abused. Check it out. And we go, elderly person lives by themselves, but their living conditions are not great, so we would think, you know, we need to call somebody to intervene. The problem is, if they have cognitive function and there's not any kind of mental disease, then you cannot make them live in better conditions. So that's, we face that more than anything. As long as their cognitive function is there, we can't force them to live better. But having said that, DHR, working with us, if they do their evaluation, because that's what they do as far as mental health, and they feel like there is some cognitive issues, they can get with probate and get them evaluated. And if the evaluation comes back from a doctor that they do have less than favorable cognitive function, then they can intervene and get them placed in facilities to help with their care. I'll just give you an example. One time, down in public housing, I thought I was doing good because there was a lady living there that the housing conditions were just horrible. She hadn't paid her rent, so I thought the best thing to do was go through the process and get her evicted from the property. And once she was evicted, because of her health conditions, now DHR can come in, they can help her get placed in a facility, and it kind of, it backfired. But they said that the best case would be to come in and look at the conditions and then do the evaluation, because they can show that they can't take care of themselves. Now, we were able to help this lady out, but there is definitely a process, and there's a right way to go about it. So another, just to give another example, we got called from a Birmingham hospital recently and said, hey, we have a female that was brought here. She has bruises all over. It looks like her caregiver has abused her. She's non-verbal. This was a nurse that reported this first. So they get DHR involved from Edgewood County. They call us. Then the doctor finally sees the female, and through their investigation, she had fallen several times. She had fallen out of the bed several times. And because of the bruising and how easy it is for elderly to bruise, it looked horrible. But in that case, they were able to prove that it was not abuse. It was just how her body reacted when she would accidentally fall. And the caregiver went through all the steps. You know, he would call for medics every time, and that's what they didn't know. You know, he was trying to tell them at the time, you know, this is a fall. She had a coffee table, but they have to start somewhere, so they call, and they'll get with our medics and see the runs to the house and see that the caregiver was doing the right thing. So that's just a couple examples of what we see. Look at my notes here. I've got a hotline number. Do you guys take that? Or I know somebody had requested a number if you, to report. So that number's 1-800-458-7214, and that is a hotline for Adult Protective Services. She, the lady that I talked to at DHR, said, you know, anybody that calls, it's kind of like dealing with kids with DHR. If you call, they go. If you don't know, they go. That's what she told me. It's better to be assessed by somebody that knows what they're looking at and be wrong than to just let it go and their condition worsen.
So if somebody, excuse me, if somebody in the community suspects that there's an elderly person that is being abused by their caregiver or by a family member or something like that, what would they call the Gadsden Police Department?
Call the police department. Either call the police department. That's the easiest, I would, you know, I would imagine. But, because we will get DHR involved, again, because they have the resources for the medical side of it, so. But there is a hotline. That's why I just wanted to introduce the hotline, but.
Well, how do you handle, and I think Councilman Williams, how do you handle when, is this an abuse when parents or elderly, their money is being taken from them by relatives? What type of, is that considered an abuse in a way?
There's a different code for that. I believe it's called financial exploitation of the elderly. And at that point, our financial crimes detectives would get involved with that. I know we had one recently. I don't work in financial crimes, but I'm kind of familiar with one of these cases. We had an elderly, she was in the hospital. I think the daughter had access to her account. She was depleting the account. The son had power of attorney, so the son was able to, on her behalf, pursue exploitation charges, you know, that kind of way. What we see a lot of is somebody that has cognitive function that will give their grandkid or their kids access to their debit card or their banking account, and then they will take a little, you know, they'll get whatever for grandma, but then they're gonna take a little bit for themselves. You'll see that more. And again, a lot of cases like that, you're in your right mind. They want to do something when they first realize that they've been taken advantage of, but then their heartstrings just won't allow them to, because that's their grandchild or their child, and they won't prosecute. So we'll see that sometimes. And without, with a victim with cognitive function that's not willing to prosecute, then you don't have a victim, so we do see that.
But just to be clear, that is a crime.
It is. Yes.
I definitely appreciate you being willing to come and provide that information. But, you know, the, under financial exploitation of the elderly, you know, the cash back at the counter scenario where an elderly person knowingly and willingly gives up the debit card to, hey, go get my prescription filled. And while there, the child fills the prescription as they were asked to, or the grandchild or whomever, but then decides to take $80 back in cash. You know, that's theft.
That's right.
That's theft and should be reported.
That's right.
And it's happening a lot. The scenario involving these cash transfer apps is happening as well. They're taking that debit card, now it's in my possession. I've got the card number. I've got the expiration date. I've got the CVV code on the back. And so now, I can link my Cash App account to that card. And in the event that I don't want to be noticed individually, I can have that money cash out from that account to somebody else. That's theft, and that's happening.
That's right.
And so, and again, I just, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you just being willing to come and speak to that. And I don't want people to miss what he said earlier. You have so many instances where these grandparents with huge hearts aren't prosecuting because they don't want to ruin the lives of their grandchildren, don't want anything negative to blow back on their grandkids. And it's sad, but it's happening. For everybody that's watching, for everybody that's in this room, please pay attention to your elderly relatives, your friends, and just make sure that the caregivers, the people that are there, that are running errands for them, that are taking their banking information to run errands, please make sure that they're not taking advantage of that situation by siphoning off cash. This case that I became familiar with involved grandchildren taking advantage of the grandparents for a significant amount of cash over a 12-month, 12 to 18-month period. And it's, and they've pretty much ruined financially this set of grandparents by taking that amount of money over that extended period. So please, don't hesitate to report this kind of stuff. You got to get the authorities involved. One of the, and I'm, does, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Put me on the spot.
And, you know, I'll apologize in advance, but we talked about this a little bit. Does any of that, is there a dollar threshold for any of this triggering any federal statutes?
Not federal statutes, that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Federal statutes would be like crossing lines or multiple cities, boundaries, it's having to do with boundaries.
Yeah, so unless the family or the injured individual is willing to follow through with the legal process, there's nothing that can be done.
Unless there's a power of attorney, you know, or there's a link to the bank account with another name on it besides just the victim. A lot of it still has to do with your, if you were in your right mind and your cognitive function, but, you know.
Did you say what percentage in Gadsden do we have of elderly abuse?
I wouldn't want to put a number on it, but.
Small or large?
Very small.
Small.
Very small. When it comes to the, when you think of, the financial, all right, the financial would be a different, it's different. I'm talking about abuse as in physical harm. It's very low.
Right.
Very low.
Okay. And I understand, because you're saying, basically, if I'm in my right mind, it's nothing that, nothing can be done because I've made the decision.
You've made the decision. That's right.
That's what you're saying. I've made the decisions, and so they consider me in my right mind.
That's right.
I understand.
And many of these elderly folks are intimidated by a lot of the financial processes now. They honestly are confused by them. To a large degree, they don't want to read financial statements like their bank statements. And so sometimes it takes time for them to realize, or it takes that embarrassing, hey, there's no money in my account, experience before they realize they've been taken advantage of. So they really depend on somebody in that family, in that house, to be on the lookout for stuff like this. And one other point that I, that was brought to my attention after just kind of looking at this case that was, that was brought to me, is it's important to also be mindful that once you start tapping, and many of you will have experienced this, once you start tapping public resources for elder care, all right, in order for you to do that cleanly, the beneficiary of the benefits has to be indigent for the most part, all right, which means they can't have any assets, and they can't, you know, and that's to include their monthly income. If they're all, if they're receiving SSA benefits, that's considered an asset, and so they can't receive that even. So if they've got property, houses, cars, any real property, at the point that you report this, and I've seen this one happen, families will back off of reporting it because they're not prepared financially to deal with that blowback. Now there's a house in mama's name, and if I put her, if she goes the DHR route, then the state's gonna take her house. She gets a check every month. If she goes the DHR route, now the state's gonna get her check. Now, it's not always that clean, but it's definitely a scenario that they have to consider. Because to get, to get DHR involved means that the state's involved, and they're gonna provide some options for you that come at an expense for somebody, whether it's the taxpayer or the individual.
Recently and said, hey, we have a female that was brought here. She has bruises all over. It looks like her caregiver has abused her. She's nonverbal. This was a nurse that reported this first. So they get DHR involved from Etowah County. They call us. Then the doctor finally sees the female. And through their investigation, she had fallen several times. She had fallen out of the bed several times. And because of the bruising and how easy it is for elderly to bruise, it looked horrible. But in that case, they were able to prove that it was not abuse. It was just how her body reacted when she would accidentally fall. And the caregiver went through all the steps. You know, he would call for medics every time. And that's what they didn't know. You know, he was trying to tell them at the time, you know, this is a fall. She had a coffee table. But they have to start somewhere. So they call and they'll get with our medics and see the runs to the house and see that the caregiver was doing the right thing. So that's just a couple of examples of what we see. Look at my notes here. I've got a hotline number. Do you guys take that? Or I know somebody had requested a number if you to report. So that number is 1-800-458-7214. And that is a hotline for Adult Protective Services. She, the lady that I talked to with DHR said, you know, anybody that calls, it's kind of like dealing with kids with DHR. If you call, they go. If you don't know, they go. That's what she told me. It's better to be assessed by somebody that knows what they're looking at and be wrong than to just let it go and their condition worsen.
So if somebody, excuse me, if somebody in the community suspects that there's an elderly person that is being abused by their caregiver or by a family member or something like that, what would they call the Gadsden Police Department?
Call the police department. Either call the police department. That's the easiest I would, you know, I'd imagine. But because we will get DHR involved, again, because they have the resources for the medical side of it. So but there is a hotline. That's why I just wanted to introduce the hotline, but.
Well, how do you handle, and I think Councilman Williams, how do you handle when, is this an abuse when parents or elderly, their money is being taken from them by relatives? What type of, is that considered an abuse in a way?
There's a different code for that. I believe it's called financial exploitation of the elderly. At that point, our financial crimes detectives would get involved with that. I know we had one recently. I don't work in financial crimes, but I'm kind of familiar with one of these cases. We had an elderly. She was in the hospital. I think the daughter had access to her account. She was depleting the account. The son had power of attorney, so the son was able to, on her behalf, pursue exploitation charges, you know, that kind of way. What we see a lot of is somebody that has cognitive function that will give their grandkid or their kids access to their debit card, their banking account, and then they will take a little, you know, they'll get whatever for grandma, but then they're going to take a little bit for themselves. You'll see that more. And again, a lot of cases like that, you're in your right mind. They want to do something when they first realize that they've been taken advantage of, but then they, their heartstrings just won't allow them to because that's their grandchild or their child, and they won't prosecute. So we'll see that sometimes. And without, with a victim with cognitive function that's not willing to prosecute, then you don't have a victim. So we do see that.
But just to be clear, that is a crime?
It is. Yes.
I definitely appreciate you being willing to come and provide that information. But, you know, the under financial exploitation of the elderly, you know, the cash back at the counter scenario where an elderly person knowingly and willingly gives up the debit card to, hey, go get my prescription filled. And while there, the child fills the prescription as they were asked to, or the grandchild or whomever, but then decides to take $80 back in cash. You know, that's theft.
That's right.
That's theft and should be reported.
That's right.
And it's happening a lot. The scenario involving these cash transfer apps is happening as well. They're taking that debit card, now it's in my possession. I've got the card number. I've got the expiration date. I've got the CVV code on the back. And so now I can link my cash app account to that card. And in the event that I don't want to be noticed individually, I can have that money cash out from that account to somebody else. That's theft, and that's happening. And so, and again, I just, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you just being willing to come and speak to that. And I don't want people to miss what he said earlier. You have so many instances where these grandparents with huge hearts aren't prosecuting because they don't want to ruin the lives of their grandchildren, don't want anything negative to blow back on their grandkids. And it's sad, but it's happening. For everybody that's watching, for everybody that's in this room, please pay attention to your elderly relatives, your friends, and just make sure that the caregivers, the people that are there, that are running errands for them, that are taking their banking information to run errands, please make sure that they're not taking advantage of that situation by siphoning off cash. This case that I became familiar with involved grandchildren taking advantage of the grandparents for a significant amount of cash over a 12-month, 12 to 18-month period. I mean, and it's, and they've pretty much ruined financially this set of grandparents by taking that amount of money over that extended period. So please, don't hesitate to report this kind of stuff. You got to get the authorities involved. One of the, and I'm, does, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Put me on the spot.
And, you know, I'll apologize in advance. But we talked about this a little bit. Does any of that, is there a dollar threshold for any of this triggering any federal statutes?
Not federal statutes that I'm aware. Federal statutes would be like crossing lines or multiple cities, boundaries, it's having to do with boundaries.
Yeah. So unless the family or the injured individual is willing to follow through with the legal process, there's nothing that can be done.
Unless there's a power of attorney, you know, or there's a link to the bank account with another name on it besides just the victim. A lot of it still has to do with your, if you're in your right mind and your cognitive function. But, you know.
Did you say what percentage in Gadsden do we have of elderly abuse?
I wouldn't want to put a number on it, but.
Small or large?
Very small.
Small.
Very small. When it comes to the, when you think of, the financial, all right, the financial would be a different, it's different. I'm talking about abuse as in physical harm. It's very low.
Right.
Very low.
Okay. And I understand, because you saying, basically, if I'm in my right mind, it's nothing that, nothing can be done because I've made a decision.
You've made a decision. That's right.
That's what you're saying. I've made the decisions, and so they consider me in my right mind.
That's right.
I understand.
And many of these elderly folks are intimidated by a lot of the financial processes now. They honestly are confused by them to a large degree. They don't want to read financial statements like their bank statements. And so sometimes it takes time for them to realize, or it takes that embarrassing, hey, there's no money in my account experience before they realize they've been taken advantage of. So they really depend on somebody in that family, in that house, to be on the lookout for stuff like this. And one other point that I, that was brought to my attention after just kind of looking at this case that was, that was brought to me, is it's important to also be mindful that once you start tapping, and many of you will have experienced this, once you start tapping public resources for elder care, all right, in order for you to do that cleanly, the beneficiary of the benefits has to be indigent for the most part, all right, which means they can't have any assets. And they can't, you know, and that's to include their monthly income. If they're all, if they're receiving SSA benefits, that's considered an asset. And so they can't receive that even. So if they've got property, houses, cars, any real property, at the point that you report this, and I've seen this one happen, families will back off of reporting it because they're not prepared financially to deal with that blowback. Now there's a house in mama's name, and if I put her, if she goes the DHR route, then the state's going to take her house. She gets a check every month. If she goes the DHR route, now the state's going to get her check. Now, it's not always that clean, but it's definitely a scenario that they have to consider. Because to get in, to get DHR involved means that the state's involved, and they're going to provide some options for you that come at an expense for somebody, whether it's the taxpayer or the individual. So those are just all things I would encourage families to start looking, and their lookback normally is about five years, I think. So I would encourage families to start looking at those scenarios, and they're hard conversations to have. I mean, they're very difficult conversations to have, but please start thinking about that stuff now. And again, thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, we'll have Mr. David Woodard. You got my message.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to apologize about the previous meetings. It was a lack of communication on my part, totally my fault. And I appreciate you allowing me to come today. I told you when I talked to you, I was going to be positive. I remember hearing a story about a man and a woman in a divorce case, and men, they were going at it in the courtroom, couldn't say anything good about each other. And the judge asked the wife, said, can you not say anything good about your husband? She said, no, I really don't think of nothing good. And then he asked the husband, can you say anything about your wife that's good? He said, well, for a fat woman, she don't sweat much. But I hope to be a little more positive than that today. Hope to be a little more positive than that today. In the last few months, last couple of years, I know that y'all have had a lot on your plate to deal with. You've been ridiculed, you've been attacked, you've been attacked from this podium, you've been attacked on social media. But I want to come today and let you know how much I appreciate each and every one of you. Over the last few months, I have seen y'all come together and stand as one in unity. I've seen you join together. I've seen you urge people that came and urge the citizens to do the same thing. You know, I know we're living in a tough time right now, and we're never going to totally agree on everything, but just because we disagree don't mean we can't be good to each other. I know, I hear Councilman Williams all the time, you know, pay it forward, pay it forward. And I just want to thank each and every one of you. And I want to urge the citizens of Gadsden, you know, we, there's been a lot of talk about gun violence, about crime and all those kind of things. If you see something, say something. Let's join together. If you see something, say something. And remember this, Dr. King said, you can't drive out darkness with darkness. Only light can do that. You can't drive out hate with hate. Only love can do that. And I heard one time, if I have to make your candle look dimmer to make mine look brighter, it says more about my character than it does yours. But I want to thank each and every one of you. You are appreciated. I've talked to several citizens in all districts, and we want you to know that there are citizens in Gadsden that appreciate you and appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad I let you come today.
See, I needed that.
And we appreciate you. We thank you. In fact, Councilman Wilson said, let him come. He's going to say something good. So we appreciate you, and we thank you for that, and we accept, we accept what you say. Thank you. I would like to do the announcement for, there's a, due to the Fourth of July holiday next week, garbage collection schedule will change. Monday's route will be collected on Tuesday. Tuesday route will be collected on Wednesday, and there's no change for Thursday and Friday. At this time, we'll have comments from the council. Councilman Williams, we'll start with Councilman Williams and go around.
Thank you, Madam President. And I do want to reiterate, Mr. Woodard, we appreciate those positive comments, which I wish we had, it would be great to get that from time to time. And we understand the nature of politics, but it's always good to get that pat on the back because it's not always easy. And it's funny, he mentioned the pay it forward. I've been, I've been continuing to do that, but it doesn't come without risk. It definitely doesn't come without risk because I was at the, in the, in the line of a fast food restaurant and decided, in the drive-through line, and decided I was going to take care of the car behind me. Didn't bother to look, and there was a car full of people back there. And I was on the hook after that. So I ended up having to pay for several more sandwiches than I planned to that day. But didn't come without risk, but they sure did appreciate it. So again, I want to encourage you guys to continue to do that, if you have been. Thank you for remembering. But pay it forward. You know, again, I don't like to publicly talk about this kind of stuff because I think, you know, I've always been taught that when you do it, just kind of do it and move on. You know, it's not about getting credit for it. But, you know, it's just, it's so, it's so good to see a child asking a mother, they're trying to figure out how she's going to pay for her basket of food, and the child's wanting a piece of candy or a sucker, and she can't afford it, and she tells the child, no. I mean, it feels good to walk up to that mother and say, hey, may I? I don't mind. I would love to. And for that mother to shake her head, yeah. And to be able to get that sucker for that child, just something that small, that changes the day for the mother and the child. That elderly lady who's got to stop what she's doing, hold up the line, walk outside to get change out of her ashtray because she didn't have enough in her pocket. You know, just think about what it means to her to just pay for it before she gets back. And for her to come back and see that her bill's been taken care of. We need more of that. And I, and guys, I get it. Gas is high. Gas prices are high, food is expensive. I bought two items yesterday from a grocery store and spent almost $20. I mean, you, it's hard for me to think of what two items that you could buy that was be almost $20 in a grocery store, but that's the day we're living in. And so, guys, please, you know, pay it forward. If you've got the capacity to, and the ability to, and the willingness to, just pay it forward. And you don't have to make a big deal out of it because I can tell you, just about every week, I go through, I eat lunch out one, at least once a week, and somebody gets a free lunch that week that they didn't expect to. And so I challenge each of you to do the same thing. If you can afford it, do the same thing, and just pay it forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Woodard?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, let y'all know the reason why I was out the last two weeks. The week before last, I was on vacation, celebrating my birthday along with my grandbaby in Shreveport, Louisiana. We share a birthday. Then last week, I was at a memorial service for one of my buddies' father passed away, so that's why I wasn't here. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Woodard for the kind words. Also, thank you to the police officer for going above and beyond the call of duty to save a life. And we need more stories like that. Maybe we can change the perception of the police officers, and we can get more officers hired, especially here in Gadsden because we're short. But just keep up the good work, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Woodard, thank you for your kind comments. It's very well spoken, and I personally thank you for that, and we all appreciate what you had to say. I too want to echo the comments about Officer Burgess, his selfless act, and, you know, you, I think he would probably be one of the first to tell you that there's other officers that would have done the same thing had they been on the scene. And also thank our first responders, Chief Reed, and I know you guys work together with our police department hand in hand every day, every night. And it's nice to see the commendation that you gave Officer Burgess. And I know that will mean a lot to him and his family, and it just, it makes you proud to be from Gadsden to see, to see things like that. So just want to thank everybody for all they're doing, all the things that you do in the, for all of our first responders. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Councilman Wilson?
As a small business owner, I learned a long time ago, know when you made the sale and shut up. So I'm just going to leave it at what Mr. Woodard said. Thank you very much for your kind words.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't here last week. I was working the post. If anybody was wanting to know where I was, and Mr. Woodard, I do appreciate the kind words you say. Today at 5:00 is the last day to qualify for the city elections, mayor or councilman. The clerk's office, I built them to 5:00. Today was the day I was supposed to qualify. I told everybody I was going to qualify today. I'm not going to qualify. I'm not running this time. I've, I'll give you a little scenario of stuff I've done here in the city that when I was about 14, I think, I went to work picking up paper at a baseball field with a stick and a gallon bucket. That's what I did. Did that for two or three years, part-time. One year, I didn't make the cut when I was supposed to be up here to get that job, and I didn't get it, and some of the employees wanted me to come on over and help them, and I did, and they all paid me every week, you know, a little money, just a little spending money. I was a kid, you know, what they think, just barely a teenager. They helped me out that summer. And then in 1979, I went on to work for the city at the Public Works. I picked up people's garbage behind the garbage truck for 10 years, a three-bed truck. Most of the roads were dirt. People didn't care. They'd throw garbage everywhere. You had to pick it up. It wasn't no problem to me. I had to have a job and work. I finally went in operator one, two, and three for a few years, and I went to a crew later, and I finally made into supervision a year and a half before I retired. But saying all that is to tell you that I've been serving the city of Gadsden for 45 years, and I think it's time for somebody else to take my place, and I appreciate whoever does it. We're getting a lot. This council right here, nobody on this council is I. If you're running for office, you're going to say, I'm going to make sure we get more roads paved. I'm going to make sure we do this. I'm going to make sure there's a bunch of raises. These three groups of people is going to get raised. That one person, this city council right here, all seven of these people, they're not I's. Nobody up here is an I. I cannot do anything by myself. If I don't get four votes for these people, nobody gets nothing. Nobody. I don't know why you out there campaigning, saying, I'm going to get this, I'm going to do that, I'm going to make sure we do away with the people that's roaming the streets, but they've got rights to. Another thing, people always call me and say about somebody speeding down the road, four-wheelers and stuff like that. It's not the councilman's job to turn that in. It's your job. If you see somebody speeding down the road, don't call your councilman, but time that person to get ahold of the councilman. All we're going to do is call it into the police department. I get calls every day, well, there's somebody speeding on this street. Will you call the police? Well, I said, why didn't you call the police? I don't want to call the police because they know I'm calling. And if you want to correct the problems in the city, you need to do what you need to do. If there's cars in your neighborhood, there's junk cars, cars is there, you think it's going to be a car lot going on, don't call your councilperson. Call the department that's in. We can't help you any stuff like that. All we can do is call the people, the department directors, and they're not, you know, y'all can go ahead and do that before we even have a chance to. They're not going to do any more for us than they would do for a regular citizen. I just think that, I hear a lot of people talking about cleaning up the city. The city's nasty. This city is nasty. We have to pay three or four people every week to ride around in cars to tell you what's at your house, yard furniture, old junk cars, motors laying around your house, just junk. Why don't you just clean your own yard up? It don't cost you any money to clean your yard. If you've got no junk car there, holler at the scrapyard. Get somebody to holler it off. Don't blame the city council for not, you know, cleaning up your yard. That's not our responsibility. It's your responsibility. If you'll take more time on your property and clean up the mess and the junk, this city will look a whole lot better. I mean, a whole lot better. Don't call your councilman. This person's got a tree up in the yard. They won't cut it. It's not our responsibility to do that. It's your responsibility to keep the city of Gadsden clean. If you don't want to clean it up, hey, it's your own fault. If you don't go to your neighbor's yard next door, if the grass needs cutting, the lawnmower's tore up, say, hey, go next door and say, you need to borrow my lawnmower. There's nothing wrong with that. Let them borrow your lawnmower to cut the grass. You know, we could save three or four people's jobs every week right there for having to ride around if people would just start cleaning up this city. And there's another thing that really, really bothers me in this city. There's another city trying to take over Gadsden. Gadsden don't come to your city and try to take it over. They don't try to get in political races. I'm not in political race, so don't bother me. I can say what I want to. No other city should be in the city of Gadsden's business. They want to be able to do their own business, and that's the way it should be. I feel that strongly in my heart, and nobody whatsoever should be telling another councilman what they need to do just because they might give them money or sponsor them, something. That don't work. Be your own person. If you're going to run for office, be your own person. Don't let somebody else tell you what. There was somebody in another city tell you what to do. Don't do that. Be your own person if you're going to run for city council or mayor. I've heard a bunch of stuff about, I'm not going to move the statue. We're not going to move the M.S.A. statue. Well, let me tell you something. I don't care if you're the mayor. You can't move the statue. It takes four council members agreeing to move the M.S.A. statue anywhere. A mayor cannot do that. A mayor cannot do away with your 2% occupational tax. That's about $17 million out of $54 million budget. Now, you telling me how the city of Gadsden is going to recoup that money? How you going to pay employees? How you going to pay their insurance? How's retirement going to be? It can't be. So that's just something somebody's telling you trying to get elected. That will not, never work unless there's another tax brought to this city that you're paying for. And somebody's yet to tell me how they could do that. And another thing, I've heard people say in 2018, the city of Gadsden did not give any raises. I've heard that. I checked with a finance lady a while ago. She said in 2018, the employees got a cost of living raise. A cost of living raise. It wasn't a lot, but they got it. You can talk to Mr. Ross about it. She's the one that told me that. I asked her today because I'd seen where they didn't get raises. No employee is better than any other employee in the city of Gadsden. Our secretaries need raises. The janitors need raises. Just don't sing out, single out two or three groups to give them a big raise and leave out the rest of the people. Some people we got don't bring home but $235 a week, full-time people. And me back up, the COLA raise was given to every full-time employee of the city of Gadsden. It wasn't to the, or the part-time, but it was done to the full-time. Let's still wait, if you, you know, you want to do something, let's still wait with all these part-time people. Give somebody a real job. They're going to make some real money. There's a bunch of stuff we can do, but just don't get out there and campaign on issues you cannot keep and you cannot do. I'm proud of this council for what we've done. What we've done, and you heard me say we, I've done nothing without these people, nothing. And all these are our friends up here. We've done nothing, one person has not did anything. It's been we. And I want everybody to understand, it's we, it's not I. It's we. If you're running for an office, when you get up here with the new councilmembers, it's going to be we. It ain't going to be you. And that's all I got to say.
You've said a lot.
I wanted to.
Councilman Reed?
I tell you what, I'm proud to be behind Johnny this time. I tell you, he said it like it ought to be said. And the people down yonder want to come up here, come on. You know, they already said they're here, so they proved it. Johnny said it. I agree with it. David, I appreciate you coming. I really did. Officer Burgess, great. This has been a good, positive meeting. It really has, now y'all. I was at the eye doctors the other day, and I met a couple in there, Charles and Barbara, and they said, we don't miss a meeting. And we know what's going on.